Good evening and welcome to the Monday, June 23, 2014 School Committee Meeting. This meeting is live, recorded, and being streamed online for the first time. And you can visit that site at longmeadow.org and click the "Live Streaming" button. We'll begin tonight with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. We'll begin tonight with a public hearing. The hearing will be structured in a way where Superintendent Doyle will make a presentation with regard to PARK and MCAS, followed by a recommendation. At that point, we will open this meeting to the public for a comment section with the school committee making comments and discussion after the close of the hearing. It's important to remember during the hearing that comments should be limited to two minutes, that you should provide your name and address for the record, and that we will not be responding during the hearing because you are, of course, supposed to be heard, and we will then respond after. So, I will hand it over to you.
Okay.
And then move that over to the line.
Okay. What is this, A-15? Good evening, and thank you to everyone who came to hear the presentation and to offer input into the decision that we're going to make tonight. This is an important decision because between the PARK and MCAS, there are differences that will impact what we do next year. We have had experience with the PARK this year, so I'm going to go through a lot of what we've learned from not only Long Meadows experiences, but experiences throughout the state. Just a quick review, the MCAS is known as, MCAS, Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System. It was developed 17 years ago, and it's based on Massachusetts curriculum. It's performance-based application, and it does writing in grades three through 10, and it does reading increasingly complex tests, texts. It also does math at various grades in grades three through 10. The PARK is the new form, it's the test of the next generation, they say. It's an electronic test, and it's the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers. It's a national test. It does more complex thinking, and it asks multi-step questions that students have to answer. It has students manipulate information on a computer. It's a more difficult test. The advantages are that we get the information quickly, but there's still some adjusting to do. There were 13 PARK states in one district. The Commissioner of Education, Mitchell Chester, was in charge of the PARK National Committee, where they developed the norms for assessing readiness for college and careers, and he helped give insight into what this test would be like. So, these are the 13 states in the one district that are currently involved with the PARK assessment. The DESE, the Commissioner's been quite involved, and they've put out information for us to read about this, and this is basically what the information is. This is directly from the DESE. It reminds us that Massachusetts is the nation's top-performing state, but we cannot stand still and allow key educational technological innovations to pass us by. Massachusetts students are performing at high levels, second to none among the 50 states, and are on par with some of the highest-performing nations in the world, and we know that from tests such as the TIMS, where Massachusetts desegregated from the country and took it as if we were our own country and we scored very high. In order to remain competitive globally, we cannot stand still. We need to continue to invest in public education, upgrade our curriculum, and instruction to reflect the demands of the 21st century, and put all students on a pathway to college and career readiness. Number two, Massachusetts is currently developing a new-quality 21st-century student testing program called PARK. It talks about 18 states working collaboratively to develop it. The key component of the state's commitment to prepare students for success after high school, there has been collaboration with colleges and universities, where they say that they will use the results of the tests to determine whether or not students are prepared to enter certain courses at their institutions. The state will administer PARK to grades three through 11 in two subjects, English and mathematics. From the DESE, number three, the goal is to measure student progress toward a common set of academic learning standards in English Language Arts and Math. We adopted new learning standards called the Common Core in 2010, and since then, schools across the Commonwealth have been introducing these standards into the classrooms. They're more rigorous than previous standards, and are tied to the skills and knowledge the colleges and employers expect of our high school graduates. The best preparation for PARK is good classroom instruction that focuses on the standards that students receive every day. Number four, over the next two years, and that's this year included, so this year and next year, schools will test-drive PARK before the state decides whether to fully adopt this new testing program. And that is really critical to pay attention to. The Commissioner has alluded to the fact that he's still questioning whether or not we'll be using PARK. In spring 2014, more than 1.35 million students in grades three to 11 from across 14 states, including Massachusetts, took the PARK field test. A field test tried out the questions, made sure the questions measured the subject area content, and built the best test possible. In Massachusetts, 15% of students were randomly selected in grades three through 11 to take a PARK test and try out the test questions. So, at a given grade level, we had sometimes only 40 students that were chosen to actually pilot the PARK. We received no data back from the state on this. Number five, higher education is a key partner in the development of the PARK. Educators from K-12 are playing integral roles in development of new PARK tests. They'll provide clear signals about students' readiness for the next grade level, and in high school, readiness for college and careers. Each of Massachusetts' 29 public two-year and four-year colleges and universities have committed to use student performance on the PARK tests as indicators of students' readiness for entry-level credit-bearing college courses. Number six, PARK is a computer-based test, though a paper and pencil option exists. You'll see several of the communities opting in for paper-pencil because there were problems with the electronic version. Computers are playing an increasingly larger role in everything we do, including education. A computer-based test will allow us to improve the ways that students can demonstrate on a test what they know and they are able to do. For instance, students will be able to use the computer to complete performance-based tasks that better measure the range of skills we value in colleges and employers reported necessary for students to acquire. They're looking at higher-level thinking, more complex questions, more manipulation of mathematical materials to come up with informed answers. Number seven, students selected to take PARK's tests this spring are most likely to continue participating in MCAS testing as well. You saw that this spring. Long Meadow chose to do both PARK and MCAS because we needed the data. Those taking the PARK were only a small representation of our population, and by having the MCAS, we'll be able to get results back on what our progress is in comparison to the prior testing. So, longitudinal study is extremely important to us. Students taking the PARK will not receive a score or grade based on their performance. We talked about that. In addition, Massachusetts high school students, at least through the class of 2018, are required to take and pass the MCAS test in three subjects to satisfy the state graduation requirement and earn a high school diploma. So, that's important to note. Up until 2018, our high school students will still be required to take the MCAS, and it still will be used to determine high school graduation. Number eight, we are striving to make PARK tests accessible to all students. We are committed to ensure that all students, including students with disabilities and ELL learners, are able to participate in a meaningful and appropriate manner so we can report valid results for all students. We're designing a testing program that is inclusive of all students and building many accessibility features that we consider to be accommodations on MCAS into the computer-based PARK test. Number nine, parents can help children prepare for the PARK test. You can help them prepare by familiarizing themselves with the state's academic learning standards. This presentation is posted online, so if you would like to see the standards, it gives you the website at the DOE so that you can tap right into that. The National PTA has also developed a Parents Guide to Student Success, available in English and Spanish in response to the new common set of learning standards. Additionally, PARK practice tests and sample questions will be made available later this spring. Again, you can find those at the PARK website. Just go to the DESE site. Number 10, in future years, PARK could replace MCAS as the state's student testing program. Based on the two-year test drive of PARK, the State Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education will evaluate the strengths of PARK and the program's ability to measure the state's new academic learning standards in English Language Arts. The Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, known as DESE, will vote whether to fully adopt PARK at the state's new testing program in the fall of 2015. So, that's a year away. So, in summary, we're right in the midst of a two-year test drive of PARK. This is the first year, and next year will be another testing year. More than 81,000 students in Massachusetts are participating in the field test this spring. Next year, districts have the choice to administer PARK instead of MCAS for grades three to eight, nine, and 11 in ELA and math. PARK member states collectively educate about 15 million public K through 12 students. The PARK is aligned with the Common Core, as is most of the curriculum in Long Meadow. The PARK is responsive to feedback from the employers and higher education regarding what they're looking for in skill sets that graduate students should have. As to the alignment of Long Meadow Public Schools with the Common Core and PARK, we see that it's aligned well with our balanced literacy and RTI intervention. It's aligned with our elementary and middle school math. It looks at deep mastery rather than superficial knowledge and skills, which we advocate strongly, but the high school still needs a realignment of math. They're now including in Algebra II calculus questions, and at Long Meadow High School, calculus is still separate from Algebra II. So, we have to go back, look at the PARK test, and see how they're embedding those tests together. And I'll talk about in a little sec the two venues of math that they're doing in terms of Math 1, Math 2, Math 3, or Algebra 1, Algebra 2, and another test. The PARK components, the performance-based assessment in ELA literacy will be given in the spring, usually April, around April. They'll be asked to analyze literature, do narrative writing tasks, read text, watch videos, and write in response to demonstrate comprehension of sufficiently complex texts. Performance-based assessment in math toward the end of the year, that will be in June, they'll be asked to solve problems involving key-grade-level knowledge and skills that come directly from the Common Core. They'll be asked to express mathematical reasoning and construct a mathematical argument. They'll be asked to apply concept to solve real-world problems. At the end of the year in ELA and math, they'll also be asked to demonstrate acquired skills and knowledge by answering computer-based machine-scoreable questions. They'll be asked to manipulate and move shapes on screen to make figures in mathematical concepts. Here are some sample questions from the PARK so that you can see the type of questions that they're asking. Well, we see if that loads. One of the challenges of the PARK question is, for example, a middle-school question will have them read two different passages, both lengthy passages, and then the students are asked to watch a video. The questions that they're then asked are to answer some questions about the passages in the video they've read, and then that's followed by writing an essay that has them synthesize the three, the two articles in the video together. The challenge is that there's a couple of things. Some of these questions have five and six components to it, and they're very, very challenging. The second thing is, this is now a timed test, and the MCAS is not timed. So, that in terms of some of the questionings that they're asking, it seems that they need to rework some of the questions. There's been feedback from several of the district superintendents, as well as others, that the questions are a little bit difficult. Again, this will be on the website, so if you go to these websites, you can pull up some of the sample questions. The advantages of the PARK will be the scoring will be rapid, will get feedback very quickly, and it will be robust for schools and families so that they can see that information. Reporting access will allow RTI, that's our Response to Intervention, when we're doing tiered interventions, so that we'll have that information in the spring, and we'll be able to use it for our class placement in the fall. With the MCAS, we don't get that information back until late August, early September. Reporting can be nationally-normed beyond just state results. Right now, all the norms that we get compare us to other districts in the Commonwealth, but we don't have that on a national level, and that's an advantage to PARK to see how we compare nationally. There'll be the performance-based assessment in the spring, and benchmark assessments in end of the year are combined for comprehensive scores to reflect assessment of students' knowledge and application. Wade Reporting will combine the performance-based assessment and end-of-the-year scores. PARK scores will likely be made public, but district schools will be held harmless in 2014, 2015. We do not believe that we will get any individual student results or school results so that while they're taking the test, it will help them better develop the test, but will not help us as a community find out how our students are doing. The PARK will allow accommodations. It will be computer-based and paper-based tests. Students with disabilities unable to take computer-based tests may either dictate their responses orally to a test administrator who can enter the data. They can take a paper-pencil test as an accommodation. Extended time will be available to students with disabilities and ELL students, that's English-language learners, as an accommodation, if included in IEPs and 504 plans for 2015 and beyond. There are also the technology-based accommodations. Some of the samples include screen magnification, audio amplification, text-to-speech, use of blank paper, spell checker, font-background color highlighter, pop-up glossary writing tools, breaks, small group, specified area of seating, test administration redirects for student attention to the test. There are also some challenges with the PARK. The wordy questions are based on multiple sources that need to be vetted. Again, that is one of my concerns, is that we've given feedback, but we haven't heard much from Pearson about their attention to rewording some of the questions that we found that were inappropriate and not at grade level for some of the students. I gave you the example of reading two long passages and watching a video, and then having a five-part question for students to answer. We need time to teach students how to answer these types of questions with time limits. We need to introduce into the curriculum using multiple readings and a video, and have students practicing answering. Test questions need to be fixed and take time to do this. We also need to practice having all students online at one time in the building or multiple classes using it, not just a sampling. We also wonder about Pearson, that's the company that has made the PARK, their ability to handle glitches, as it was not sufficient during the spring round of testing. At Long Meadow High School, we had our students sit in the library for an hour and a half while we waited for Pearson to answer our questions, which they never did. We ended up sending students back to class, and they never took the test. There were major glitches at other communities. Our K through A program went very well because our teachers and staff and tech department had practiced, but there were major glitches in other communities, and I wonder about Pearson's ability to take on the entire state at one time and respond to the needs when you're in the middle of live testing. Alignment of high school math, again, we've talked about the high school needs to be aligned to make sure the calculus is embedded into Algebra II so that we're not having students take a high-stake test that is not aligned to the curriculum. With MCAS, there are also critical considerations. We know that the students are familiar with the format and the test-taking strategies. They've had that embedded into the curriculum, so it's not something that's new. We had years of validity, 17 years in usefulness of data. We're using it in our program called INFORM so that we're actually able to look at elementary information together with other types of assessment that we're using.
Hi, sorry. Joseph.
Oh, it's gone?
Yeah.
You have to go here, Assistant Preferences, and then it pops up.
This is one of those glitches she was just talking about.
Yeah. Thank you. It's also important longitudinally to see how our students are doing. We've been using this data over a series of years to track our progress. We've made changes to the curriculum. We're in the midst of some initiatives right now, particularly around literacy at the elementary and middle school, and having that long-term data is really critical to see if the programs that we're using and the changes that we're making, if we're making progress. The MCAS is untimed. That's a huge shift for students to move to the PARK where we're suddenly timing again. That's something that teachers have to think about and reintroduce into classroom to get students in the mindset that there are time limits on what they need to do. We will use it as a supporting tool for placement, RTI, and conversations about teaching and With the MCAS, the time on testing is clear. Each test for grades three through eight has two separate sessions. They're designed to be completed in 45 minutes, although students can take as much time as they want. You have the ELA composition, grade 10 ELA reading comprehension, grades three through six math, grades five and eight science, technology, and engineering. The test sessions were designed with 50 minutes in mind for grade seven and eight math, and the test sessions designed with 60 minutes for grades three through eight ELA reading comprehension. Individual test sessions are designed to be completed in 60 minutes for grade 10 math and high school science, technology, and engineering. With the PARK, the estimated time for students to complete all sessions of the performance-based and end-of-the-year components in ELA and math by grade, eight hours on performance-based assessment and end-of-the-year annually in third grade, just over nine hours of testing in grades four through five. In middle school, a little less than nine and a half hours on the testing, and in high school, nine and a half hours on both types of testing. So, it's a significant increase. At the high school, the PARK will be given at the ends of grade nine, 10, and 11. High school math exams will be given at the end of each course, so if they're taking Algebra 1 or Algebra 2, it will be given at that time when the course is completed. PARK is creating two sequences of exams aligned to two different math course sequences. There will be the traditional pathway, which will be Algebra 1, geometry, and Algebra 2. There's also going to be a second pathway titled Mathematics 1, Mathematics 2, and Mathematics 3, which is a more integrated test. Again, right now, there's some choice in that, but they're not sure which pathway we're going to use, and we need to know more about that. Each state can decide whether to require one set of exam for all districts, or whether to allow districts to choose either the integrated or traditional sequence, or a hybrid approach. These are the current decisions as of last week. Over 100 communities have voted, 57% are choosing PARK, 43% are choosing MCAS. These are the like districts. When we look at the DESE, these are the communities that they compare us to in terms of socioeconomics, academic achievement, and like communities. So far, the results are in. Mansfield has chosen MCAS, Marblehead the PARK, Westwood the PARK, and Wilmington the MCAS. Others have not decided yet. Final thoughts, I believe that the PARK test questions need to be more clear. I think they're frustrating for some of our students, and they need to clarify their expectations. I worry that Pearson will not be able to respond to all of the requests of all districts in a timely manner, making it very frustrating for staff and students taking the test. Teachers and principals need time to adjust to a new assessment protocol, strategies, and related interventions. There would be an absence of reliable data, the MCAS, during this time, which would mean we'd be taking tests with no results and no information that would guide our instruction. There is definitely uncertainty and discomfort throughout the state among educators, families, and district leaders about the new PARK assessment. Teachers are already teaching PARK standards in terms of the Common Core, but we need to readjust some of our teaching in terms of doing multi-faceted questions so the students get used to doing that. Students are tech natives, and they adjusted very well to the technology even in the earlier grades and made great adjustments to what they needed to do. We saw no frustration on that part, so that is not a concern of ours. My recommendation is that we stay with the MCAS for next year. Why? It will give Pearson time to work out the glitches. We need the MCAS data to assess our progress on initiatives. There'll be no data on Long Meadow from PARK if we use that tool. There are numerous initiatives underway. I don't want to distract the teachers from what our mission is for next year. We need a year to teach students to answer multiple-step questions in order to reduce their frustration with lengthy test questions. And we need to update our technology curriculum in order to teach the skills needed to use the testing technology. We have to make sure that students, even in third grade, can use a bar, that they can know what the icons mean, and they're able to apply those. So, those are the changes, those are the reasons why I think that we should stick with the MCAS for a year. So, at this time, I'd like to pass the meeting back to Michael for school committee discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Murray. So, Leah, hit the lights, please. So, at this point, I'm going to open the hearing for...
Do you want to talk with the school committee commentators?
No.
Questions?
Not talk to the hearing. So, for the purposes of the hearing, again, I would just ask audience members to approach the microphone and state their name and their address. We are going to limit comments to two minutes, and we will not respond during the hearing. We will, however, make comments after the hearing. And so, it's not time for questions, but more a time for comments and for you to be heard on this subject. And so, with that, I would ask the first person, whoever that might be, to approach the microphone. And I would say that this is the hearing on PARK and MCAS.
Oops.
It'll be for visitor comments, Bill.
If we'll hold this as a comment.
Yeah, and there will be visitor comments after on alternative subjects, but this hearing is specifically for PARK and MCAS.
Hi.
Yeah, wherever, either one, they both work.
Hi. I'm Ruth Griffiths, 40 Englewood Road, and I'm glad to see that there's a recommendation to stay with MCAS for one more year. I think that I wanted to let it be known that although I feel like sometimes there's a little bit of an idea that there's a conservative movement against Common Core and against PARK, that there's really a bipartisan movement against that, and coming from a very liberal background, I wanted to represent that side of it, to let it not just be a political issue at all, because I think that that's important to have it noted, that this is coming from both sides politically. I'm really glad to see that we are having a recommendation. I'm really curious to know about the teachers and the principals and what their comments are about the PARK and the actual alignment of what is going on in the classroom. I think that sometimes there's ideas of alignment, and then there's the reality of what's happening in the classroom, and I'd really like to see what they have to say, and I don't know if there was a recommendation from them, or if you've heard from them yet, but I'm very glad to see that we're doing this because I think that we need to definitely let the glitches be worked out and find out if this is even going to be adopted to begin with. The kids are being tested way, way too much, and the limitations of this kind of test are very overwhelming for some kids, especially in the, I don't think enough has been done in the special needs or the learning disability community yet, to accommodate a test like that, and it can be very demoralizing to do more and more testing on things that you don't know.
Thank you. Who's next?
Thank you. Thank you. Who's next? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Moreno, and I live at ninety-two Wild Brooklyn. I have two boys going into third and sixth grade. I will address the question that is on the table, PARK or MCAS, in a while, but right now, what I want to talk more about is something that has been, all the testing that has really been invading our schools. Testing has become such a predominant part of the learning environment, and frankly, I find that worrisome. Do children need to be assessed to find out what level they are at the beginning of the year, so if they need help, they can get it? Yes. Should they be assessed at the middle and end of the year to see what progress has been made? Absolutely. Should the complete curriculum be geared toward doing well on one test? A test that is questionably written and sometimes age and grade inappropriate? No. My husband and I moved to Long Meadow primarily for its school system, but what I am seeing year after year is very disheartening. Long Meadow never needed improvement. It already was one of the top school districts in the nation. Should we always strive to be better? Sure, but not by basing all of our decisions on the results of one test. Teachers are being held to impossible standards and being put under the microscope, and yet their input is not welcome, even though they are the ones in the trenches. I know some excellent teachers who put their heart and soul into what they do and really get to know our children and want to help them, but they feel like their hands are tied. They have to follow guidelines that don't make any sense to them and go against everything they learned and know works. So I ask all of you tonight, please, keep the children at the forefront and do right by them. Politics does not belong in education. I know that tests are mandated, but please keep the tests, the results of those tests in perspective. It is one test and does not and should not define or represent our children, the teachers, the school, or the town. As to the question that is on the table, I do believe we should stick with MCAS because since PARK is in the beginning stages, and I hear there were a lot of glitches even in our school, I would suggest staying with MCAS. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've written a statement, I'm Melanie Rothstein, Thirty Englewood Road, and we've written a statement together. It's about four minutes, and we're going to each split up, and she is actually going to speak for her mother, who's not, has come from the wall, and find a microphone. And I am very pleased with your decision to stay with MCAS. As many of you are already aware, I'm very much opposed to the implementation of PARK. I've spent countless hours researching the data on both PARK and Common Core standards, and without Common Core, there would be no PARK. I've met with others opposed, including state legislators and Dr. Sandra Stotsky, who is architect of Massachusetts Standards and MCAS. I am very well informed on the subject and have documentation of all ten points that we plan on making. Number one, PARK has no proven track record. We've only tested it once and in not all grades or subjects. Initial results show it to be highly problematic, particularly in New York, which has had a longer testing period. MCAS was built for performance and built to last, catapulting mass students to number one in the nation for all subject and all grades for the past ten years, as well as tying for number one with Singapore in eighth grade science internationally, as mentioned, the Tims test that Reed Doyle mentioned. The co-writer of the Mass Reform Act that brought about MCAS is, quote, "troubled by the willingness to replace our trying true MCAS." Number two, PARK is designed to test the Common Core standards. However, there were no K through three classroom teachers or early education developmental experts on the writing committee. This may explain why many experts deem the lower-grade test to be developmentally inappropriate. For example, kindergartners are expected to be able to, quote, "read emergent reader texts with purpose and understanding," unquote, while reading may be entirely appropriate for some in kindergarten and is not for others. Number three, the language to accommodate special needs children is particularly undeveloped for Common Core standards. A student's IEP can address student accommodations to learning, but the standard itself may not be changed. We can therefore safely presume that PARK testing will have to reflect that in flexibility. Number four, PARK is inappropriately long, as already has been addressed. College and post-grad tests all accept the bar, so the LSAT, MCAT, GRE aren't as long as the PARK test is. Number five, to date, there have been many glitches in the test itself in both test question construction and in grading. There have been complaints of ambiguous questions, trouble with online access, and glitches in the grading results, as well as complaints that the test questions are developmentally inappropriate. This test is not ready for our children. She's going to continue.
Okay, so number six...
Ms. Healy.
Oh, Mia Comby, two ninety Shaker Road. So number six, Pearson, the company that has been contracted to grade the PARK essays, is developing a computer robo-grader to grade the essay portion of the exam. However, MIT's recently retired director of writing across the curriculum, Les Pearlman, says that the computers are incapable of deciphering total gibberish and incoherent babble from exceptionally good prose because it can't actually understand meeting, meaning, only grammar, length, and use of pretentious language. PARK slash Pearson will not allow for independent review of the program, raw numerical data or results. Number seven, the president of the Massachusetts Teacher Association does not support Common Core or PARK testing. Eight, test cutoff scores are arbitrarily set differently from state to state, which cause some states to perform worse than others, which recently accounted for Kentucky scores being higher than New York. This will inhibit reliable comparisons of test results on a state-by-state basis. Number nine, the test results are not open to review. No one, not teachers, principals, or superintendents are privy to, or, sorry, privy to results. How can we learn from our practice tests if we cannot review our final results? Ten, probably most importantly for the people here, we don't have to implement this now. The decision isn't due until October first, but even then, we can choose to stick with MCAS. Why would we choose to impose a test that has so many glitches, is unproven, unfunded, and is still in its infant stages and far from being finished? In fact, many Massachusetts communities have already opted out of PARK. About half of the towns that have made a choice have rejected PARK in favor of MCAS. Initially, there are twenty-three states involved in the testing, and of them, thirteen have stopped participating. There's no guarantee that the mandate to implement Common Core and therefore Common Core-specific testing will still be the same in 2016. As four states have completely withdrawn from Common Core, bringing the total of non-participating states to twenty percent, there's no benefit to early adoption of PARK. Please vote no.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
So we'll just take two minutes.
Okay, I'm Nancy Mueller, Stephen Mueller, from forty-two Clermont Street. As a community college professor with a strong background in research, I feel compelled to urge the Long Meadow High School system to continue giving the MCAS test to the third through eighth graders next year. The issue of whether Long Meadow chooses to administer the MCAS or the PARK test next year will have important implications, not only for how the school system and teachers are evaluated, but also for the teaching curriculum. I know firsthand from speaking to a few of my children's English teachers in the middle and high school that their teaching curriculum throughout the school year is influenced in major ways by the type of assessment tool that is used at the end of the school year. For example, certain English teachers are focusing on having students write short in-class essays almost exclusively because they want to prepare students for the short-time tests and exams that students will be required to take if they take the PARK test or the AP English Composition Test or the SAT Writing Test. In contrast, the MCAS test that we're using now, in the composition part, there is unlimited time for students to write a long essay and revise it. They have an entire day to do that, so there's no time pressure, and I think that's a better way to go about learning writing. Also, any type of assessment test needs to have three characteristics. It needs to be standardized, and needs to be valid and reliable. A standardization sample should include a large number of individuals across the country who are randomly selected to take the test, and the test must be administered to all students under the same testing conditions. This standardization condition is being violated by the PARK test in that students across the country may take the timed test using one of four testing modes: desktop computer, laptop computer, tablet, or paper and pencil. Keep in mind that this is a test with strict time limits. If you try answering the few practiced English Language Arts questions that are provided to the public online, you will undoubtedly notice how different this type of administration is from the typical paper and pencil test. A test is valid if it actually measures what we intended to measure. In this case, we need to determine whether the PARK test actually measures the skills that students are intended to learn through the Common Core curriculum. The reliability of a test tells us whether the test yields consistent results. For example, a student should receive similar scores if he or she takes the test and then retakes the test after a relatively short time period. The main point that I want to make here is that we will not have any data on the reliability and validity of the PARK test until at least the fall of 2015. In fact, the public has not yet been provided with any of the results of the PARK test that was administered even to a sample of students nationwide this past spring, and it's important to note that even the teachers have not seen the actual questions on the PARK test.
Steve Mueller, forty-two Clermont Street. This is a particular concern with the PARK test because it was written by Pearson, a major publishing company rather than trained educators. Pearson was awarded the contract to use a tremendous amount of federal funds to develop the test items and analyze the scores. Unfortunately, Pearson has a troubled track record in terms of designing, administering, and scoring exams. If you try out the eighth-grade English Language Arts Practices for PARK offered to the public online, you will seem to, you will notice that some of the questions seem to have more than one correct answer. My wife has used Pearson textbooks and test banks for some of her college courses, and she has found many of the multiple-choice questions in their test banks to be poorly written, ambiguous, and not suitable for use on the tests that she has given to her students. The MCAS test was developed in 1993, and there's a great deal of data which supports the validity and reliability of the test. In addition, Massachusetts students' average composite score on the National ACT ACT test is higher than that of students in any other state in the country. This suggests that there is no immediate need to change our current assessment and teaching methods until we have data which show that the PARK test is a better way to measure students' abilities in their English Language Arts and math than on the MCAS test. The commissioner of the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recently stated that he hopes about fifty percent of school districts will decide to administer the PARK test while the remaining fifty percent will continue to administer the MCAS. I strongly recommend that Long Meadow continue to use the MCAS test until we are able to see direct comparisons between results of the PARK and MCAS tests in the various districts throughout Massachusetts. In addition, waiting a couple of years to make the final decision would be prudent for three reasons. Any ambiguous questions on the PARK can be revised, appropriate time limits can be established, and most importantly, test results can be analyzed to determine whether the PARK test has adequate validity and reliability. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
My name is Maggie McKellany, and I live at seventy-nine Wimbledon Drive. And, you know, I come tonight as a very concerned parent. There's, there was information shared tonight that shows, you know, Y Park, the positives about it. There were some challenges presented, but my husband and I have been learning a whole lot, and more and more is coming out about, first of all, Common Core. And, you know, the more we learn about it, the more concerned we get, and so much so that we have actually pulled our children and we are homeschooling them, not because of the teachers. We've had wonderful teachers, not because of the administrators, they have been wonderful. It is because of Common Core. PARK is aligned to Common Core, and I don't think, you know, if we don't learn more about Common Core and thus PARK, it's not going to be positive for our children and for their future. More and more is coming out, and what I would like, and I'm glad to hear that, the recommendation is to hold off, because what I think can happen then is we all, as citizens, as parents, learn more about Common Core, both sides to it, because I'm not hearing here, learning it here, the negatives to it, and there is a lot to that. And I think as parents, we need to, this is about our kids, and we need to learn the negative impact this is going to have on their future. And I think Common Core and the PARK testing are not in the best interest of our children. There's a lot to support that, but we got to learn about it. And yeah, we got to learn both sides. It is time to, as Ruth said, this isn't political. We've got to put that aside, and we've got to do, and I pray that you all will make the right decision for our children, because that's where the focus is, not what's the best for the Long Meadow schools, okay, or what's right politically, but what's right for our children, because that's what's important, and that's my hope. And so I would say, please vote down PARK, but I'd also like to ask that we have some more opportunities for more information to be shared about Common Core and to learn more about that. I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Margaret Rockus at sixty-seven Shadyside Drive. I have two children in the Long Meadow Public School Systems, one in high school, one in elementary school, and I want to be clear that any criticisms that are stated by me are in regard to state and national Departments of Education and not towards the Long Meadow School System. I am glad that we are going with MCAS, that you're recommending MCAS for next year. I have spent myself probably on the order of twelve to sixteen hours reviewing various PARK websites, the Massachusetts DOE site, PARK site, the PARK site itself, watched the video on the tutorial of how to use all the little icons. I got about half an hour through that, and I was done. The test might be engaging, the tutorial is not. And I am not against the use of, the well-integrated use of technology in the schools. This is the third year my older child will be going to a computer camp to learn Java, and so, you know, I think computers are something that we need to accept in our lives. But the more I dig and the deeper I dig, I feel like PARK is this year's salted caramel ice cream. It is glitzy, it is sexy, it is so chic, and I am shocked at some of the things I'm reading online. NPR had a piece on the cool new features, like, well, children will have to explain their answers now and write essays. You kind of wonder what other states were doing in terms of their no child left behind testing, if children were not at some point writing essays. Kids in Massachusetts already do these things. They need to show their work on the mathematical problems, they need to write essays. And what makes this test really cool and so very 21st century is the computer interface, which, you know, it's basically, I feel like, these are pigs at the trough, whether it's Pearson or the PARK Consortium, which is a bunch of people you can't really drill down and figure out who they are and what consultants they're supporting. And I have to say, as a parent, I'm just really tired of educational fads. I'm into good pedagogy. I've read the book, The Smartest Kids in the World. It is not true, and I've gone to the Massachusetts DOE website. We can't compare with others, ourselves with other states, we can't compare ourselves with other countries. Well, no, there's the OECD PISA test, which is given to fifteen-year-olds across the world, and that is how we know that, you know, well, the US doesn't rank very well... And that is how we know that, you know, well, the US doesn't rank very well compared to these countries like Singapore and Switzerland, and we're in this pool. Well, let me tell you something. Massachusetts is in this, is in the second-tier countries, okay? So we are in the countries where students are in stable democracies, not authoritarian regimes where they can do whatever they like and ignore students that they don't want to teach. We are in there with Poland, we are in there with Finland, we are in there with Canada. These are countries that the author has studied. If you haven't read the book, I urge you to do so. And we are doing very, very well. I feel like what PARC has done is taken the best parts of the MCAS test, not that I'm a fan of MCAS, but I think it's a, for, for a standardized test, it's the best we can do right now. And they've put a GUI interface on it, and they've sexed it up, and they're going to be just, you know, let's buy more technology, let's upgrade this, and it's money that is not going to go to teaching students. It's going to be teaching to the test, learning how to do the process. And I feel that it is just a true waste of not just money, but teachers' time and students' time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right.
Hi, my name is Lisa Doherty. I live on Primrose Drive 43. I came to learn tonight, I didn't come to expect to speak. But I, I'm a little disappointed frankly by what I learned, because wow, that was an ad for MCAS. And maybe that's the right thing, but I felt like this is all about protecting status quo, and maybe there's something there. You said consistently, PARC is more challenging, more complex. It's your job as the school committee to raise the bar for our kids. I entrust you with my two kids to raise that bar. So hearing you protect status quo so strongly makes me a little nervous. So I know there's other people embracing PARC. I happen to chair the board of a charter school. We're going PARC. We believe in it, the, the DSE is pretty clear, that's the way they want to go. It raises expectations, and for me, that's what this is about. So I just feel like there should be a second voice. I'm probably going to get smacked as I walk out of here, but that's okay. It's a, you know, I think we need to think about the broader picture.
Thank you. Hi, Ms. Jasmine.
Hi, Stephanie Jasmine, 123 Englewood Road. I'll start by saying I was really pleased with the recommendation by Superintendent Doyle. I echo those thoughts and thoughts of many here. And if for no other reason to take MCAS over PARC this year, it's, the students would be taking PARC for no other reason than to take a test. We would get no data from it, that it would not be used for RTI, it wouldn't be used to inform the teachers, it wouldn't be used to inform the, the parents. It would solely be used this year for the students to take a test. And as was shown, they didn't have any problem adapting to the technology. It sounded like PARC administrators had difficulties adapting to technology problems. So it really would be for no other reason than for those kids to sit and take a test. No information would come from it. So while the argument is valid against Common Core and against PARC, we're talking about this coming year, and this year, that data from PARC would not be usable by anyone. It would simply be for our students to sit and take a very long test full of glitches shown to cause a lot of frustration in the children, and really, it would serve no other purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing nobody else, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing. I'm going to close it, and we're going to talk and vote.
Need a second.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All right, the passes 6-0. The, the motion on closing the hearing passes. At this point, I'm going to open it up to school committee comments and questions. And done.
I'll start off by saying, I'm no friend of testing. You go back and read the history of testing. IQ tests were devised for soldier placement in World War I, and they were horrible examples of assessing people's intelligence. It was class-based, race-based, rural versus urban. But the MCAS has been around for a while now, so at least it's a known quantity. And, and it, it does provide some validity, reliability, and yardstick for measurement. So I support going along with it.
So I went to the PARC presentation that, who was it, Jonathan Landman did back in April. And when I saw the sample that he did out there on his presentation, I got a little nervous, because I have a third grader, and seeing the way that they would have had to take this test online scared me, because I didn't see my child knowing how to do that. So I feel like we need a little bit more work integrating that type of technology into everyday curriculum so that they feel more comfortable using a computer for a test. I had asked the gentleman about funding technology, if this test is going to be mandated, and we're going to be mandated to, to take it on computers. And he didn't really have a clear answer for how he was going to fund, fund that, so I was concerned with that. But I guess I, I'm leaning the direction of the MCAS, because we have so many new initiatives going on, and testing the test one more year, I don't, I don't know that I think we need that.
Anybody else? Please.
Okay. At first, when PARC first came out, I thought, great, you know, high expectations for our kids. You know, why wouldn't we want high expectations, like Doherty said? But then, after researching and looking at the test questions, like you said, for a third grader, the in-depth analysis, the, the complexity of the questions, I mean, to be honest, I couldn't even answer them correctly. And that's, I guess that's not saying much, but anyway, I agree that we should hold off, and hopefully, the PARC people will reassess and maybe get some elementary school teachers to come up with some questions for that portion of the ELI at least.
And you're not alone with people struggling with the questions. I hear that across the state.
I was, I was talking to an elementary principal from Springfield last week. Her child is in my first graders' class, and she actually, she's here in Long Meadow, and she, she said, I might as well give you my opinion while you're here. And I, she was okay with the test, testing the test. She said, if there's no implications, why not? Gives the teachers a chance to see the questions. I don't know if they are, it doesn't sound like they get, will the teachers get to see the questions?
Eventually we'll see, plus we can work off the sample questions and tests.
But her biggest concern was, last year, her school did some testing, and you get this little tiny box on whatever your size screen is, it's different on every screen. And her kids were only filling enough information to fill that box. They didn't realize, because they hadn't had the experience on the computer, again, my third grader's experience, of actually typing and seeing that box like expand and keep going and going and going. So her kids would type one line or two lines, however much would fill the box, and then they'd be done. So there's just things like that that we need to keep in mind in teaching the kids. I mean, I just thought the drag and drop, I was, I was watching them do the test, like my son would not have known, like pull down windows and you can click this. I just, I haven't seen anything like, him doing anything like that in his classroom activities, so I, we just need more time.
I'd, I'd like time to get the technology teachers at the elementary school together to align that and readdress the curriculum on some of those skills that are going to be introduced on the third grade test, so that we're introducing it in second and third grade to them, so they're prepared.
Yeah.
Well, also, the questions are worded in such a way that you, there are more than one correct answer, even in the classroom when the kids are given Pearson tests. I, I know that my third grader will go down to her grave and tell you that there is more than one correct answer on many science tests that she took this year, and that she should have received a better grade. And she's really correct, I mean, it's right. It's, and then, it's not just in third grade, it's throughout across curriculums and Pearson tests. The questions are written to trick kids up, and that's not showing what they learn. It's, it's just not a good test.
So, I'll be honest, I did not really know exactly which way to go with this one prior to maybe Thursday of last week. And then I had the opportunity to speak with some principals in district and get their, their feedback, as well as the teachers. And the one thing that kind of came through, especially from, from hearing some of the high school administrators speak, was that our kids are definitely ready for PARC. PARC's not ready for us, is what they said. And they were very vehemently opposed to adopting PARC for this coming year. And so I reached out some more and spoke with some other teachers and spoke with some other administrators, and obviously spoke with you a little bit too. And, you know, I feel very comfortable with your recommendation, after hearing a lot of the concerns that you shared tonight and a lot of the concerns that I heard over the last couple of days from, from teachers and from administrators about even some of the issues just administering the test. So I, that's, that's, that's how I feel about it.
The administrative team and teachers have been talking about this for months now, but I think we've become more cognizant of some of the real dilemmas with the test as we've gone through it, and more and more news has been coming out. The newspapers have been filled with helpful stories on, on different experiences in different communities. But somebody had asked about the administrator or teacher's viewpoint, and they prefer to stick with the MCAS for a year.
Yeah. So, any other comments? Are we ready to vote? Make a motion.
I believe we accept the superintendent's recommendation with respect to MCAS.
Do we need more specific language, or?
Good enough. We're to retain MCAS for testing.
Drafted, though.
Yeah, okay.
But I don't know if that's exactly what you need, so.
Okay. Well, I'll, we'll do it. That's fine. Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? See none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Right.
The motion carries. Okay, moving right along. Correspondence.
There is no correspondence.
There's a letter of correspondence.
I thought there was a letter in the beginning.
I know, I got the last one. You, I got the question.
But it's not in here, so.
A letter from Mrs. Crack.
It's dated the 17th. Mrs. is today. So we received a, a letter from Mark Ducey, from the Hinden Woolboroughham Regional School District School Committee regarding their concern about the number of initiatives and the pace of the initiatives from Mass DOE, and the fact that they are unfunded.
And just for a little bit more information, I received this letter at my house, and they invited us to participate, or they invited the, the chair of the school committee and the superintendent, or their designee, to participate in a super-regional school committee group. This letter is, I gave to all of you, I'm sorry I didn't make the packet, but I, I would like it submitted as correspondence. My recommendation, given the fact that the actual chair of the committee is not here, would be that we just say that it's her or her designee, and let Janet decide when she's back, whether she wants to attend or send someone else.
Janet's planning on attending. She got the invitation a week ago.
All right, perfect. All right, moving right along, visitor comments. Phil? I know you were waiting for the right thing.
I can see an agenda, so I'm quite sure. Forget my jack-in-the-box response to get these. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and to speak. My name is Bill Ravinesi. I reside at 19 Pleasantview Avenue, Long Meadow, Public Health Specialist. I have serious questions about the new generation artificial turf that require answers, on I think you are right now considering the proposal in hand. Funding to convert a Long Meadow High School natural turf field to a synthetic turf field should be declined for a number of reasons. Most important of which is that the proposed synthetic turf field may be hazardous to human and environmental health. The proposed artificial field is made up of ground-up used tires, commonly known as crumb rubber, AKA styrene butadiene rubber, or by the industry name, tire-derived fuel. Same product, different name. This product is used to fuel incinerators. Studies conducted in Connecticut, New York, and other venues have confirmed the presence of several toxic contaminants in crumb rubber fields, including the metals, arsenic, cadmium, cobalt, lead, and zinc, and the chemicals, acetone, ethylbenzene, tetrachlorethene, toluene, xylene, benzothiazazol, n-exodine decan, 4-t-octophenylsulfurcarbonblack, and oils that contain polyaromatic hydrocarbons, PHs, and volatile organic chemicals, as well as phthalates. Some measurements exceed both federal and state guidelines. These contaminants can off-gas into the air or seep into the groundwater. The tire crumbs can get into players' shoes, socks, jerseys, and pants, and dust particles from these crumbs can be easily inhaled. Health effects associated with these contaminants include serious eye and skin irritation, birth defects, cancer, nervous system damage, and immune system suppression. One of the studies by Environmental and Human Health, Inc., a Connecticut-based nonprofit organization made up of physicians, health professionals, and policy experts particularly noted that the 4-t-octophenyl corrodes mucous membranes. This may adversely affect people with asthma. And certainly, we have a lot of that in this community. Additional studies and reports from other municipalities can be found at www.sinturf.org. So what's really going on here? The auto industry and the US Tire Industry Association have a tire disposal problem. Simply put, it's expensive for them to dispose of hazardous waste tires. Used tires are building up across the nation and around the world, for that matter. The industry's solution: create products and weave them into the fabric of society. Society will bear the cost and the health effects. It's called externalities in economic terms. Each crumb rubber field is laden with approximately 40,000 tires of pulverized rubber. Crumb rubber tires are now also being laid around homes as mulch, in children's playgrounds, and many other uses that are coming onto the market as we speak. Does this sound familiar? Think of asbestos and the claims that were made throughout the 20th century, the miracle mineral, from the breakfast table to the power plant. Asbestos has ended up in toasters, hair dryers, talcum powder, insulation, auto brakes, 3,500 different products. And by the way, in the peer-reviewed National Library of Medicine in 1935 by a South Carolina medical school, it declared that asbestos caused cancer in 1935. Look at how many years it took for us to get it out of society, and it's still in society. While manufacturers claim the fields are safe, the potential health effects of exposure to these chemicals, endocrine disruptors, neurological impairment in cancer, can take years to develop. Without long-term field testing, no one is in, is in a position to say the exposure is harmless, particularly in children. There are other problems with tire crumb rubber synthetic turf fields. The surface temperatures of these fields is significantly higher than natural soil or air. Temperatures of 164 degrees plus Fahrenheit have been recorded in summer months. Such high temperatures can lead to injuries and significant dehydration. Cleaning, and cleaning the fields require harsh chemicals, and body fluid spills are especially difficult to handle, and concerns about unusual industries, I'm sorry, injuries, staph infections, MRSA, and the eventual disposal and cost of the worn-out fields, not to mention the loss of environmentally beneficial natural turf grass, of which its sequesters, carbon dioxide, have also been raised. And finally, crumb rubber fields come at a steep financial cost as well. One budget comparison put the respective costs of natural versus synthetic turf fields in perspective. For every dollar spent on construction of a natural turf field, $11 were spent on constructing a synthetic turf field. Many other questions arise: field sanitation, abrasive surfaces, warranties, field longevity, and replacement costs. These concerns with crumb rubber fields have convinced many decision-makers to choose rehabilitation of natural fields or use alternative safer substitutes over installation of crumb rubber synthetic fields. This proposal needs to be rejected for the health of our children. And finally, I would say that the last time I testified in this town on this was 2008 in front of the Community Preservation Board. They rejected the crumb rubber field by a vote of nine to zero. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you, it's Ravinesi. All right, moving right along, I'm going to reshuffle the agenda just a little bit because I know that we have some people who've been waiting through the hearing for their presentation on... on the subject of turf. And so at this point, I would welcome those people to give their presentation. How you guys doing?
Good. Start meeting tonight, huh?
It's the way we do it.
Again, introduce myself, Chad Hanahan, 19th Road.
George Haddow, 55 Eli Road.
So obviously, we're here to look for your endorsement to replace the natural grass with synthetic grass on the stadium turf. As you know, Long Meadow currently does not have adequate, well-maintained playing fields for high school athletes and youth participants. There are currently over 4,000 high school youth, high school and youth program participants in the town of Long Meadow. Long Meadow Sports will be able to utilize this new field year-round as we currently pay other facilities for space for tryouts, practices, and games, as well as our current fields are overused and under-maintained. With the synthetic turf, participants will be able to practice and prepare for postseason play as well as all games that are played on synthetic fields. Synthetic turf is cost-effective, it's less maintenance than natural grass fields, and we don't have to rent out other facilities. What are the human and safety environmental risks? I've submitted to you a lot of different tests. Attached were several studies regarding water runoff, off-gassing, and potential risks. These studies are all from local DPHs, EPA, and the CSPA. The studies are in-depth. Attached were also studies that state there are no more injuries due to synthetic grass as opposed to well-maintained playing fields. We obviously currently lack well-maintained playing fields. California has the strictest environmental regulations and concerns in the U.S., and they are currently installing synthetic turf at a record pace for its green-friendly aspects. What's the longevity of synthetic turf? Standard warranty is eight to 10 years. Attached is a spec sheet for the most popular system currently being installed at high schools across New England. I believe that was attached as well. What happens to turf when it needs to be replaced? Turf will be taken up and replaced with the latest turf system. The old turf is 100% recyclable. How is the synthetic turf maintained? Attached was a cost comparison between natural grass and synthetic turf. You'll notice that there's a big cost savings which will help our declining maintenance budget. A piece of grooming equipment, which is provided with the field, will be required to be used once every three weeks, saving on gas, labor, and mowing equipment. Field costs will, the field will cost approximately $3,500 per year to maintain. Grooming takes two hours. There's no need for using or maintaining an irrigation system. Currently, the DTVW maintains the fields and we train on how to utilize new grooming equipment. What is the cost of the project? Attached is a budget provided by AstroTurf. Costs $610,000 with additional fees and permits, engineering, and architectural design. This project will be funded privately, no cost to the school department or town of Long Meadow. How to fund for future replacement? We recommend creating a stadium authority with members being the high school athletic director, parks and rec, and representatives of the youth sports organizations. They would meet as necessary to schedule events, grooming, revenue generation, et cetera. It is important to organize this group as this will be a big investment. The asset and the assets needs to be properly maintained and managed. Obviously, like other projects, we cannot let our facilities be overlooked like the track. Revenue can be generated by renting the field to outside organizations. Average rental fees in the areas are between $100 and $125 an hour. Bay Path College has expressed interest in renting field space when the project is completed. All high school and youth sports programs in Long Meadow are self-funded by user fees, booster clubs, and donations. The town currently budgets nothing. These groups are used to raising money, managing budgets, and struggling for access to quality playing fields. Many have expressed interest in the field and willingness to provide financial support. Timeline of the project? Pending school committee and town approval, will be able to install spring 2016. It'll take 10 weeks to complete. The stadium will need to be completely off-limits during construction. Construction of synthetic grass will not affect the track in regards to drainage or damaged track with construction vehicles, as AstroTurf would build a bridge to keep trucks off. Also, 90% of the synthetic fields are installed without installing a new track. Surrounding communities with synthetic turf: West Springfield, East Long Meadow, Springfield, Holyoke, Chicabe, Enfield, Southfield, Wilbraham, Springfield College, Smith College, UMass, Amherst College, and Ellens College. Local schools currently planning: Agwoom High School and South Wick-Tallin Regional High School. That's what we have.
Great. So obviously, you guys have put a lot of work into this and, you know, and I know that we certainly appreciate that. And at this point, I'm going to open it up to questions from the committee. John?
Your very first point was that we do not have adequate, well-maintained playing fields. I agree with that. But is putting synthetic turf on top of a football field really the solution to that? Shouldn't we be looking to clear some trees from the meadows or finding areas where we can build new fields? Wouldn't that be a better response?
I think that if we look at opening up those venues, then we're going to have the issue of taking away conservation space or we've talked about the meadows being a floodplain area where we wouldn't have season-round accessibility. Northampton currently has fields over by the Oxbow which they can only use in the fall area. They really can't use them in the spring. So the reason why we don't have adequate playing fields is because our fields are overused. Our fields are used by continuous sports all the time. They're not allowed to rejuvenate. They're not allowed to rest. We just don't have the ability to do that because there's not enough space for our kids to play, and we don't want to turn the kids away.
And this figure of $610,000, if you're not going to get it from the taxpayers, who are you going to get it from?
Privately.
Where are they going to get it? Huh?
Privately.
You're going to raise $610,000 in Long Meadow?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to know how to do that. It might help us.
Well, they currently all play for sports now, so.
We have to ask for overrides, you know. I don't mean to make light of it.
No, that's fine. That's understandable.
No, we understand that. And we've, since this whole thing has come about and come to fruition, numerous people have been approaching us and the momentum that's being generated on this is, I mean...
It's exciting.
Let us prove you wrong, sir.
Well, the previous speaker, Mr. Ravinesi, testified it's to the harms. And it's his assertion as a public health official that there are considerable number of harms that go with this. I was surprised to find out that there's a problem in this country of getting rid of tires. I kind of suspected it when I was driving through Hadley and saw a farmer with something like 500 tires stacked up on top of his hayfield or whatever it was. But is his assertion correct that it's really just a disposal? It's a proposal to get rid of and recycle tires?
There have been numerous studies done. Some of the studies have been done by the manufacturers and the people that produce the fields. Other studies have been done by the state of Connecticut, by the state of California, by the EPA, and all of these people have come out saying that they endorse the fields. There was a study...
He said he'll explain when he gets a chance.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have.
Sure. Anybody else?
I'll ask a question.
Yeah.
Have you done the research of like the company that you would want to use? You know, reading a little bit of this novel that you gave us, you know, what kind of turf type, things like that? Have you thought about those things yet?
We're in the midst of doing all of that. I mean, there's several different companies that we've been working with, so.
Okay.
We haven't finalized anything yet.
Right. And the type of turf you would use would be the newest and healthiest possible version?
Some better.
I have a question.
Are there more of those?
No, I was standing on one of those huge old turf fields last week watching my son. I was talking to someone about another turf field that they play on, and he was telling me about maintenance. Out in Lancaster, they year-round plow the field. Is that type of cost built into the type of maintenance that we're thinking about here? Is that something we would think we would need to do to be able to keep it useful?
Our cost included basically the labor and gas to go over the field in grooming with the grooming material.
Okay.
If you wish to use it for the actual winter months or we get a spring snowstorm, that there's really no way to come up with a number.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering if we might have to keep that in mind.
Yeah, well, the good news about that aspect of it is that they don't have to plow at the exact same time as the roads. So that overtime cost is...
You plow during the...
They can plow it whenever. I'm just...
No, it's a good question.
It was interesting to hear them say that they, because if, I mean, I know that this year we had a very wet spring.
Yeah.
And I know my kids were impacted by the lack of playing time, the lack of fields and the lack of, I mean, playing time that we were, what is it? Practice time we had available in April and late March. So I like that aspect of it. I just, thinking about all angles.
Yeah, that's good. Michelle?
Yeah, and this dries faster than like a regular grass, so you can use it sooner. So if it's raining...
It doesn't have to thaw out, so...
Okay.
The thaw-out process is really what hurt us this spring because it was cold so long that once the ground actually did begin to thaw, there was a top mud, and you had to wait for the top mud to dry before you could use the fields. That's why they were closed for such a long period. And the other thing about these fields is that, I mean, we're going to take a field that we only use for games because we like to keep it looking nice, and we're going to be able to add use to it by creating this, by using it as a synthetic field. Thus, it would free up and allow some of our other fields to catch up a little bit and not be as overused as they are. We'd be taking one field and being able to use it about three or four times as much as we currently use it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
They don't have to be re-lined and...
It's permanent.
Okay.
So I just have a couple of concerns and a couple of questions. The fact that it's permanent, we can't ever go back to a regular turf field once we make this decision, is that...
You could, it'll just...
It would be like...
Well, I mean, you take out the synthetic, you put grass back and put an irrigation system in, and you plant the grass if you ever go back.
But isn't that easy to... Yeah?
Yeah. Costs money.
Okay. And then the heat risk on the fields, from just the research that I sort of tried to pile through, it's about 40 degrees higher than the air temperature? So if we have kids playing on the field on a hot day, that's another 40 degrees hotter on top of what's going on?
Yeah. I mean, right now, nobody practices on the varsity field that we're talking about using. Everybody has their own designated practice areas on dirt. If the temperature didn't get hot, yes, it is higher on turf than it is on regular grass. But, I mean, they could always go back to practicing where they practiced before the turf field got introduced. Or they could, you could just time management during times of the day. We comparatively speaking are not that high of a temperature area compared to Arizona, California, Florida, Alabama, any of these southern areas where they're putting these turfs and using them on a regular basis.
And there's a threshold, a temperature threshold, where you don't play on it after a certain temperature, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. What is that, what is that temperature? Do you know?
On my end, Dave Wheaton, Levin Cross Street. I also actively manage the Northeast for AstroTurf, synthetic turf manufacturer. And these gentlemen have asked me this to kind of come and I help with some of their questions that they might be facing today. Without a doubt, in the 50 years that synthetic turf has been around, heat has, during the hottest time of the year, has been an issue that we've constantly been trying to solve. The way that typically they get around it today is just avoid playing on it during the hottest times of the day. We have fields outside of Las Vegas and as George mentioned, and obviously in Mexico, the Caribbean, and the southern states, they just avoid the extreme times, be responsible with water management, your players, and the rest of the time, they're out there early in the morning or later in the evening when school are... It's really a comfort thing. Fortunately for us here, the youth and the high school programs are really over by the middle of June. So the organized sports in Long Meadow are pretty much done during that time until things pick up in August again when school comes back.
This is like kind of a whole big factor? The fields are just like a breeding ground for bacteria, that things like blood and skin and other kind of remnants from a game are left there and just sort of fester?
Sure. Yeah, let me address that because that's not necessarily the picture in reality. The synthetic turf particles, the material that makes it up, it's all nylons, polypropylene, polyesters, and polyethylene fibers, as well as the crumb rubber, do not pose a hospitable environment for microbial growth. The former speaker mentioned something about MRSA. There's never been a case of MRSA traced to a synthetic turf field. The MRSA will come from the locker room, from shared towels, what have you, but nothing's ever been traced to the actual synthetic surface whatsoever. Ultraviolet light and Mother Nature are the best ways to kill anything that's on the field right now. If you do have someone get sick or if there's an injury with blood spilled on the field, you would treat it just like you would if it was natural grass or if you were in a hockey rink or on a basketball court. You can address it with disinfectants that are not hazardous. We obviously make a whole line of cleaning and disinfecting agents that are not toxic chemicals today. You can hose it. We always recommend having a water source near the field so you can actually hose it down. These fields drain vertically, meaning all the rain, everything goes down through the turf into the stone subbase beneath and actually recharges the soil that's right underneath the field. Only the excess amount of water is actually captured and drained, piped, and taken away so that the field never floods or it gets too wet to actually play. So, yeah, for the most part, Mother Nature and ultraviolet light will prevent anything harmful from growing on the field.
Okay, I think my final question is already done. But I have a child with severe lung... Issues, so that's the other thing that in all of the sort of the research that I was sort of looking at in different websites was, that was another big red flag, was the implication for kids with asthma.
Sure. Yeah. There's probably no product in the public marketplace right now that's been tested, looked at, analyzed more than crumb rubber over the last 15 years. You're right, there's the tires today, we don't have massive tire dumps like we did when we were a kid that were always on the news burning. There's a repurpose for tires today more than ever. They're used in sports flooring, in weight room floors. You probably have some here. I don't know what we just put in the new high school. They're used in synthetic turf tracks. That's exactly what we have at the high schools. Crumb rubber, our track is made of crumb rubber. It's been out there for 20 years. It has not been a concern to anyone up to this point, so I don't know why it would necessarily be today. It's used in panning for underneath sports floors, underneath work mats. It's used in equestrian industry as an additive to corrals and track material to make it safer for horses and things like that. There's a lot of uses for it. It's been around and it's been analyzed by every nation, by every public agency. The studies that I helped provide to Chad that he presented to you were studies that were done by state and public and federal agencies, not necessarily stuff that came from the tire industry or from environmental organizations that just don't like anything synthetic. So we tried to take the most thorough and probably unbiased group of material that we could as far as presenting that for testing for you. And you'll see that, sure, they all mentioned off-gassing from crumb rubber, you know, that new car smell and your carpets, that's off-gassing that you smell. A lot of things do. It's just a matter of are the materials that are coming out of it at measurable rates where it's a concern to the participants playing on it? And all these agencies, state, federal, and local agencies that have tested it have all said it doesn't pose any additional risk above and beyond what you're experiencing from traffic going down Williams or Bliss Road and Exhaust, et cetera. So there's nearly almost 10,000 of these in the U.S. right now. It's not like this, we're going to be the first ones to kind of head down this road.
And one follow-up.
Yeah.
I'm not sure the legal status of the fields in town. Aren't they under the control of the select board?
They are.
As opposed to the school committee?
Yes.
Yes.
So, in terms of...
We're looking for your endorsement, sir.
Yeah.
Nice, sir.
I, I for one, fully support this. I, I agree with everything you've said and quite frankly, in the last week or so, I've come to learn that we actually pay for turf space in other communities and in other areas. And so I think there's a serious argument that could be made that although our, our teams do incredibly well and are state champions and a lot of times, that they could technically be at a competitive disadvantage and we're actually paying money to put them in a position where they're performing at the level they are because we're renting space. I think that there's a really great argument that can be made for reducing the cost of maintenance to the EPW. Maybe that some of that money can come back to our buildings. But I, I for one, am very supportive of this project and of your initiative, absolutely. Now, I don't know if the school committee is in a position tonight where they want to take a vote to endorse or not to endorse or one way or the other, and I'll, I'll, I will leave that to the board, but if not, this will come back as, as a follow-up agenda item. So...
Are we prepared to vote?
That's my question.
That's my question.
I'll let you guys answer that. So John and I are asking the same question.
Are you prepared to vote?
I'm prepared to vote.
I think I'm prepared to vote.
I went through most of those documents.
I liked the water savings. I, I saw one of the documents you gave us. How much water was that saving for? It was a lot.
It's a lot.
Liz?
I'm prepared. Yeah.
John?
What's the question?
Are you prepared?
To vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion of endorsement.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of endorsing this proposal, raise, raise your hands. All those opposed? Any abstained? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Let us know, you know, I know you're going, yeah, please let us know how things go.
Can I make one suggestion? And it may be out of realm of possibility, but have you thought about going a little bit bigger and doing a stadium? There are many other districts, as you said, that are going for the artificial turf. It has come to our attention that some districts are making two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year.
That'll grow.
So that if we had a stadium with lights and lockers and redid the stadium, it could bring revenue to the town and it could be a way to sustain the field forever. So I, I know it's asking a lot, but it's something worth considering because you could definitely bring income to the town if this goes through.
So brought to our attention, we think the first thing we have to do is to get the new turf field out there. That would probably encompass the track, the stadium and do lighting at the same time.
And probably lockers, too.
Yeah.
Maybe it could be a phased-in type of a thing.
Yeah.
It, it could. It's just, it's a massive amount of revenue that, that the district that has all of that is going to get the rentals for all these tournaments because you have several neighbors that are also putting in turf. So it's going to be the total package that the tournaments will go to, I think, so.
And legislatively speaking, this is a very convenient community because we're very close, a lot closer to the highway than our competition.
Exactly, exactly.
I think the only concern about phasing it more than anything else would just be the actual physical...
The momentum?
No, the footprint, right? Because the visitor bleachers are so pushed right up against the tennis courts.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't be in favor of phasing because it would just shut down the field too many times, so. You'd have to look at a study and do that, but as long as you're discussing this, it's worth everybody discussing, so.
I'm asking people for money.
Yeah, we'll ask them for money.
If you want to think of someone who's been injured on a Long Meadow field, that passed the ball, your head is like, not her name, who's been injured on the field twice and can attest the fact that Coach Duguet hits out and walks every inch of the fields to repair any holes that he finds in the field for every single game and cuts the grass himself. So I just wanted to throw that to some people.
Thank you.
Thank you for being so patient in answering my question.
Yeah, thank you for, and thank you for doing this. I think it's, you know, everybody, everybody's going to benefit from this.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. All right. So after a, after a deviation from our agenda, I will move on to school committee comments because I didn't do that before.
I'll make a quick comment.
Sure.
I want to thank all the teachers, staff, or, for having such a wonderful year and hope everyone has a great summer.
I guess. I would just echo that, but I would also say that I would like to wish Larry Birdy a very successful and enjoyable retirement. I had John and Marie and I and Tom were all at his retirement party the other night and it was awesome. It was, it was like a trip down memory lane in a lot of ways, but it was amazing to see so many people come out, you know, former students, former teachers, former administrators, you know, Tom McGary was there, the former principal of the high school was there before Larry. It was just really, it was really something and I think it was a very special night as much as he was uncomfortable with people paying so much attention to him for so long. But it was, it was really, really special and I think it was, it was very well deserved. And so, you know, obviously, we wish him the best of luck and he will be missed. On a related note, when Tom Landers was introduced, he did, he was introduced to a standing ovation from the staff. So I think we can feel comfortable knowing that we made a very good decision with that, with Tom, and then good work to whoever was involved. So, yeah. Oh, and one other comment is that you'll know Kelly Gange is not here tonight. I believe she has the rest of the week off. She took vacation?
No, she's still here.
Oh, she's still here.
Her son has finals in baseball.
Okay. But obviously, this would be the meeting where we would say our goodbyes to her, so, you know, best of luck to Kelly and her next endeavors as well, and she will be missed as well.
And to all of our retiring teachers.
Oh, yeah, them too. So there's a lot, so. All right, moving right along. We're going to speed through the rest of this. Marie?
First, we have a new staff development model that's gone out to the staff. We are preparing for our August, two staff development days. The teachers come back to school at the beginning of the year prior to the students' arrival and we're going to use a learning mini-conference. The middle school staff development team got together and suggested they'd like more choice and the elementary teacher's been talking about this. So Chris Collins and Kelly worked with the team to come up with a plethora of opportunities. And then we polled our principals and our elementary teachers to find out workshops there. So this is very exciting and if this model works well in August, we hope to continue it because it does give more choice as well as teachers will have a variety of workshops to go to so they can get snippets of several things rather than focusing on something for one or two days. If you're interested in seeing it, go to longmeadowlearning.org and you click professional learning and then professional pathways. But congratulations to Kelly, Chris, middle school staff development team, the principals and everyone for doing a great job. The director of student service opening has been posted and it closes on Friday. A hiring committee will be established. This is a position that actually the school committee appoints, so I'd like to have one or two representatives sit on the hiring committee. And then I would, I'd suggest that you have me bring forward a candidate for you to interview and then approve for hiring if, if that would be okay with you.
Anybody? Katie? Anybody else? Liz? Good.
Great. Thank you.
No problem.
The Glenbrook principal search is still underway. We had word from the DESE that the waiver was not granted, so I'm working on another option and we'll have news for you very shortly.
Did they tell you why, Marie, or did they just say?
They're very strict around that. They, they hold to two years from retirement. They have a hardship waiver, but they, they just, they really don't give reasons. And they sent me through fifteen, twenty people. I kept climbing up. They sent me over to the retirement board. They said, we can't answer this. It has to go back to the DESE. I said, well, they sent me to you. So it was a long, arduous process that got us nowhere, so. The curriculum for reading and writing is also on lifelong learning. What we're trying to do, the educator evaluation task force, and Marcia Harz here, who's been on it for an eternity, our LEA president, we've been working with, with the LEA administrators and central office to talk about the new teacher evaluation tool. And with that, we've agreed that a teacher in order to be proficient needs to be following Long Meadow's curriculum. So we're trying to get all the curriculum onto one website so that anybody can access it at any time. Internally, we use a program called Atlas and you need a password to get into that so everyone can access it. So Carla is going to be working on that in, in terms of seeing if we can make that more accessible for people and have that ready for the fall. But the reading and writing is up there and we're transferring other information. As Michael alluded to, Larry's retirement party was absolutely fantastic. He had over a hundred and eighty people there celebrating his many years of success. It was interesting to see the retirees who are there as well as current staff members, parents, school council members and more. Larry has done some daring things like insisting on breathalyzers at prom so that kids are safe and not drinking and driving. He's done things like hired the best staff that he can find, but he's also taken a stand when a staff member's not up to snuff. He lets us know that and he, he takes the appropriate steps. He's always done what's best for the children, but he has an amazing way of working with people and he really is highly respected because of his interpersonal skills and how he's been able to really support the staff in getting the work done. So I appreciate all he's done. I also am not sure that many people know he extended his retirement by two years. He could have been collecting his full pension and working another job and doubling his money. He didn't do that because of his dedication to Long Meadow and the new high school. And we really appreciate the fact that he did that because having him at the helm and communicating between teachers and the construction company, overseeing construction, has been really phenomenal in, in getting the high school to where it needs to be. So I, I know I personally will miss working with Larry as will many other people and we wish him all the best as he moves on to his new endeavors.
I think we also forgot to mention that Deb Callahan might be the funniest person at Long Meadow High School.
Deb is funny.
She's very, very funny. She really, she really nailed it the other night.
Yeah.
So if you ever retire, book her. All right. Janet did not send along an update, so we'll move on to Mr. Rinaldi.
Thank you. Back in chair. The school year has all but concluded. We have one day of finals left at LHS, so wish me luck on physics.
Good luck.
SCAC has met with Mr. Killam and the food service team from Whitson's. We're very impressed with the plethora of information they were able to provide us. We're currently taking steps to make that menu that they showed us more available to the students and make sure that they know that they have someone, Mr. Killam, who's very responsive to suggestions and things that they want changed. So we're hoping to make that available both via the communication boards, which are now almost active. So we're hoping to have the menus up there next year and then also just via email, just notify students that they have these resources. I guess there were some problems with the website, so we've gotten those fixed, thanks to Ms. Godin. So moving forward there, electronic report cards have been implemented. The Strunkly sent out a Alert Now phone message to all the students and at the, either the end of this week or beginning of next week, when report cards are mailed, they will also be emailed to all the parents. So as the message stated, if you go on Power School, just make sure your Guardian email is correct, so you'll get it. Very excited about that. If the testing goes successfully, we'll work on any problems and then quarter one of next year, we will continue the push.
Can I just interrupt you on that real quick?
Go ahead.
I mean, can we just kind of applaud Joseph because he literally took that issue on by himself and got electronic report cards implemented and active, so.
It's huge.
It's huge. So, well done.
Thank you, Michael.
So...
I appreciate it. Some questions were brought up about, in the past couple of weeks about parking at LHS, and I'd just like to remind everyone that I published a report on parking at the beginning of the year. So if any questions are about why we charge what we charge and why we don't charge what East Long Meadow charges and what the money goes towards and what it's been in the past, please just see the student office website. Read my report. I'd like to thank Mr. Birdy for his years of service and wish Mr. Landers the best of luck. As a part of the committee that hired him, I think we made the best decision possible. And thank you to all the teachers and have a great summer, everyone.
Thanks, Joseph. Any questions for Joseph?
I do.
Go for it.
So is your idea for the report cards to phase out mailing them?
So Mr. Drunkley and I have had this discussion several times. He's checking into it, but it looks like the way it works is that we're going to have to mail out quarter four report cards because they're the final year, they include the grade that will show up on your transcript and that's kind of like a by-law thing.
Okay.
My idea has always been that always have paper report cards available first, all students, and an opt-in program. So the email report cards for Q1 through Q3 will be opt-out. Looks like maybe by the second quarter of next year, if all's well, maybe that would be the system we move on, but...
Okay.
That is my, that's my vision, that's how I saw it, but the, the final report card will always have to be mailed.
Okay.
And we are, I spoke with Mr. Rwanda and we're also going to try to, right now, we're just doing parents' emails, maybe try to do the school Gmail for students as well, but it's just something else that we're going to look at next year.
And lower grades?
Right. That's, we'll see how it goes at the high school and then, because I, as I understand it, the new system, the new Alert Now, I don't know what particularly what it's called, makes this very easy to do. So if it goes well here, hopefully we can do it throughout the district.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions? As always. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Great. Moving right along to finance subcommittee report. John?
Okay, the finance subcommittee met on June 18th, 2014, and Tom, do you want to just do a quick summation and then I'll call for votes? We approved most of the recommendations.
So we have a number of items that will need school committee action this evening. The first is standard practice for end-of-year budget transfers. School committee in the past authorized the superintendent to approve end-of-year budget transfers in accordance with a school committee policy, DBJA, which is included in your packet. And basically, the policy would require that a transfer be done in a line item that has a deficit that exceeds the total appropriate amount in that line by at least ten percent and is more than one thousand dollars, or the deficit is in excess of ten thousand dollars. So again, this is something that's been done to allow for expediency in terms of closing the fiscal year, you know, mid-July, late July, when all the transactions are booked.
Okay. So, are there any questions about that? It's pretty much routine, end of the year, closing out accounts, moving money around. All right, I'll make the motion. I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee and as specified in the school committee policy, DBJA, that the school committee grant authority to the superintendent to approve the necessary budget transfers between UNICEF budgetary lines in order to close the fiscal year 2014 accounts.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion carries six-zero.
The next item is the food service contract amendment for renewal. Finance subcommittee recommends this. Do you want to add any details to it or...
Yeah, when we initially did an RFP last, before last fiscal year, the state and USDA regulations allow you to enter into a one-year agreement with four renewals. And there are one-year renewals and so each year, we will be required to amend the contract to change the terms of the operating dates. We made some additional changes in which we're reducing the number of sites in which we service. No longer will be serving any of the satellites that we used to provide food service or lunch meal service to. And then there is a budget with information regarding what they anticipate the operating expenses and revenue to look like for next fiscal year. It does not impact the prices of the lunch or any of the à la carte items that are sold. That strictly remains under the purview of the school committee.
Okay, so you need a motion?
Yes. If I could, I would just add that it also includes to authorize the chair to sign it. We will have to forward the actual amendment to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to get their approval on it before we can execute the agreement, though.
Okay, well, I move, we, on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee, we approve
If I could, I would just add that it also includes to authorize the chair to sign it. We will have to forward the actual amendment to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to get their approval on it before we can execute the agreement, though.
Okay, well, I move, on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee, we approve the food service contract amendment for renewal as presented.
Second.
To include the language, Tom.
Yeah, if we could include the language to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the committee.
So move.
Thank you.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor. The motion carries.
Okay, next item, the finance subcommittee has reviewed a request from the after-school program Lingua Links. And it's our recommendation that we approve this. It's been something we've approved in the past. And they pay for use of the buildings and they cover custodian costs. In Lingua Links?
Again, the only reason it's here before you tonight for consideration is under new policy, the building use policy requires requests that will exceed more than 15 uses during a school year to receive school committee approval. So finance sub reviewed it and recommended it for school committee approval.
Okay, so I move that we accept the recommendation of the finance subcommittee for the Lingua Links program.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor. And the motion carries.
Okay, I'm going to skip the summer meeting schedule.
I got that.
Well, shouldn't I go to?
Oh, yeah, you want to do weekly salary schedule and then I'll go back to summer meeting?
Yeah, okay, so number five on your agenda, fiscal year 15 salary schedule. This involves nurses, central office support, Medco support, courier slash messenger. I move the school committee approve the fiscal year 15 salary schedules for the nurses, central office, support staff, Medco support, and courier messenger as presented. The basic language or argument on this is this extends to these personnel, the same 2% that was given as part of a negotiated settlement with all the other units.
We've historically done this, correct?
Correct. It has historically been approved for these group of employees that do not belong to a collective bargaining group to receive the same cost of living increase that was negotiated and approved for our negotiating groups. But for the record, if I could add, the rate for FY15 for the courier would be $15.19. And the annual salary for the Medco assistant to the coordinator would be $36,862.12. There are not specific schedules that exist for those two positions. It's one individual in each position.
Okay, well, that's the motion.
Okay. A motion and a second. Just to clarify, the motion is to accept the salary schedules as presented. A second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor. The motion carries. All right.
Okay, that's the end of the finance subcommittee, but now we go back to summer meeting schedule.
Yeah, so Janet and I sat there prior to her leaving, and we marked down some dates. So for the week of July 7th, we can have one, we need to have one either the 9th or the 10th. I think those are the two dates that Janet gave me. Or the 8th. Is the 8th the latest that we can do it? I think we had till Thursday, right?
I think Wednesday would be the latest you'd be able to do it.
Okay, so we could do the 8th, 9th, or the 10th? We can do them anytime. Typically, we've done them around 10:00 AM.
On the 8th.
On the 8th. Okay, what about the 9th?
You could do it earlier.
We could do it earlier as well.
Do it at 9:30. I just need time for a member of finance sub to come in prior to the meeting to review the warrant.
I just have to be at the very end of the floor.
Okay.
Well, finance subcommittee is going to meet on the 1st of July at 1:00 PM.
Right.
Okay, if we go on the 8th, I prefer the afternoon.
Okay, what time?
1:15, whatever.
1:15? Can you do a 1:15?
That's good for.
10 minutes? Yeah, these are typically just warrant meetings, unless, of course, there's business that needs to be done. Hmm?
I have to.
Okay. What, okay, so the 8th at 1:15, you said?
Well, yeah, 1:00. We're at 1:00 o'clock. There's some reason we sit at 1:15. I forget, though. That's during the school year. 1:00 is fine.
Liz, does that work for you?
I am unavailable.
Okay, so that works for me. Okay, and Michelle, you're not available that day. I think that Janet was only available on the 9th and 10th that week, so because there's only three of us available, we might have to move it to Wednesday.
9th?
To the 9th. Liz, can you make the 9th?
No, I can't.
Okay. Janet can make the 9th. Can you make the 9th?
I can make the 9th.
You? No, okay. So the 9th, and then we'll say 1:00 on the 9th?
Okay.
Does that work?
That works for me.
Okay.
As long as it's fast.
Hopefully it will be.
July 14th?
And we can, you know, and if it turns out that.
I won't be here.
Okay, well, it should just be a warrant meeting. If it turns out that the agenda's looking longer, then we might ask if we can move the time up on it. But other than that, all right, so 1:00 on the 9th? Great. All right, and then we need one on the 14th, or up until that Wednesday, I guess, right? Or you need it specifically on the 14th because that's the FY13, or 14, okay.
Correct.
So who can make it on the 14th? Liz, I can make it?
I can make it.
I can make it. Oh, no, no.
You can't. All right, Janet can make it, so there'll be four of us there. All right, and do you want to say 1:00 on that as well?
I like it.
I know you do. Liz?
That's fine.
All right, cool.
It's Bastille Day.
It's Bastille Day?
Hmm.
Not on my calendar. All right, and then the 28th? And that day's also not too flexible, correct?
No, that one is a little.
Oh, that one's a little more? All right. So does the 28th, 29th, or 30th? Oh, yeah, you're right. I have it in here. All three days to hold. Which day works best? 28th, 29th, or 30th?
28th is great for my.
28th is good for you?
Right now, it's okay with me. I can do the 28th.
I can do the 28th. John?
Yeah, I'm free on the 28th.
All right, you want to say 1:00?
1:00.
In the morning?
Yeah, 10:30. Does that, can you do 10:30?
10:30?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. It depends on the agenda. All right, perfect. And then we have one more, which is the 11th, and that one is not a flexible date, correct? We pretty much have to do it that day?
No, again, I think you can do it Monday, Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, okay, you're right. It says it in here, a hold of all three days. I'm not reading my calendar well. All right, good stuff. All right, so for the 11th, 12th, and 13th?
I can't do the 12th.
All right, you can do the 11th and the 13th, Liz.
11th.
John?
Right now, I'm free all three days.
Kim?
Right now, 11th is fine.
Michelle? So the 11th, do you want to say 10:30?
Yes.
And then Janet, while we have this going. Janet and I also proposed a date for the school committee retreat, which would be the 21st of July. At 2, and she's looking at 2:00. The 21st works for everybody.
Why can't we do it in the morning?
It's long. You're not sitting here all day.
I am waiting to hear on the availability of a vacation home that week.
Okay.
So.
Can we tentatively schedule it?
Tentatively.
Liz, you go.
Sorry, what was that?
21st? Of July?
Every week in July?
21st?
Yeah. For the retreat.
It's free right now.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so we'd be looking to do that, I have it in here at 2:00, so it'll, you know, some more information will be forthcoming. That obviously is, you all know, is a longer meeting where we'll set our goals, but there'll be snacks, so.
So what time are you planning to start?
I think right now, we'll say 2:00. If anything, it'll get pushed a little bit later.
2:00 PM.
Last year, last year was three hours?
I think it went three hours last year.
What kind of snacks?
Pizza.
Pizza, usually. It's a Monday, so you might be able to provide. The, I don't know, he'll come to all of them.
Because he's responsible.
Because he's responsible. What were you going to say about this? And we might go off-site. I don't know what off-site really means, but we'll figure out. It may not be in this room, I think is what off-site really means.
My house?
It might be in a different room.
Janet's house.
Janet's house.
She has pool.
All right, Diane, we're posting it for Janet's house.
Here you go.
She's got a pool. All right, perfect. It's not my house. I don't think.
I think that's a great idea. Janet would be very welcome.
It's what happens when you go away, you know? One time I went away, I came clerk of the finance committee. Ask me how that happened.
She has a very valid excuse for being.
She absolutely does.
Reward your child?
Yes.
For not doing anything nasty with their whole year?
Her whole high school career.
Whole high school career?
For excelling.
For excelling.
For excelling.
Yes.
Janet took her daughter on a special vacation.
Incentives.
In celebration of her graduation, so.
And you got to change your email signature.
Yeah, I got to change the signature on my email. It's the acting chair for a time. All right, perfect. Thank you very much for that. I'm going to move right along into other reports. School Building Committee. So we were supposed to have a meeting, and Tom Murphy asked that we reschedule it because there's still some information forthcoming on the commissioning of the building. And so at this point, we don't have an additional meeting date or a new meeting date, but it will be in the next couple of weeks, I assume. But they wanted to have some stuff wrapped up before he gave it to us.
Bobby?
And Tom Murphy.
Yeah, there's been a meeting postponed several times. We have a list of issues that we need to look at. There's a discussion on warranties that's going to happen. I've asked Tom to meet with Tom Murphy and to see if we can nail that down before we sign off. So there are still more meetings to be had.
Thank you. Legislative?
The budget hasn't been finalized. It probably will be after the 1st of July, but otherwise, there's nothing to report. We should expect an increase in revenues. That's the scuttlebutt. So I don't know if that's going to mean more money for us.
Just hoping.
Chapter 70.
Thank you. Green?
I don't have anything to report, but I kind of feel that our work on the Energy Subcommittee is kind of entangling into it, so.
Great. Op-sub?
Oh, it's not mine anymore.
Oh, who's on the operation sub?
We did not meet, no meeting to report.
Fantastic. Seal. Okay, collaborative?
Well, I attended my first meeting of the Board of Directors, and, well, there's just one minor thing I'm going to report to the committee. They have us listed as an asset for Glenbrook Portables, a building worth $286,000. Well, I drove down to Glenbrook and I didn't see any portables.
Mary Ann Williams?
And I'm looking for some clarification on this. There are some portables over at Williams Middle School, portable-like structures. Is that what they're referring to, or?
No.
No?
No.
What are they referring to?
I need to follow up on this because the collaborative invested some money in Glenbrook. I invested some money in Glenbrook, and I'm hoping they're not thinking that that's now the part of the building they think they own. They don't. They enhanced the classrooms and they added on a section. So I will talk to the new director of the Pioneer Valley to make sure that he's clear on that. And that question was raised, I think, by Tom last year. Because they added on a section and they put in a classroom or two, who really owns it? It's our land. It's our school. And it's the same way when a collaborative updates a classroom, the school still owns that. So I need to revisit that.
And that's the life skills classroom, correct?
Correct.
And that program is predominantly based here, at the High School now?
It's a collaborative program, so kids come in from all over, from various districts. But it's, again, each district contributes by offering space to the collaborative, but it doesn't mean that they own the space. So we have to have a discussion about that. And I'm assuming that's what they mean, so let me declare. That's an assumption of where that figure came up from and what it is, so I'll follow up.
It's the two rooms off of the gym hallway.
Okay, so it is the life skills rooms?
Well, we have our own in-district life skills program, which is down across from the auditorium.
Oh, that's another thing.
Yes, these are two collaborative classroom programs, as the superintendent indicated. And they've been there maybe 15 years, maybe a little longer now.
Wow.
That they added on and built these specific areas for instructional purposes, so.
Okay.
This was my first directors' meeting, so when I heard that, I was kind of taken back because I had never seen these portables. But it's been a charge for about 15, 16 years?
Yeah, John, they're not really, they're attached to the building, so you wouldn't necessarily look at them as a separate structure. They're not portable buildings in the nature that they'd be able to be removed and taken off the site. They are built and attached to the building. So it's basically, in addition, was put on containing these two classroom spaces.
Okay.
But as Marie indicated, I don't have any paperwork that shows any kind of agreement between the schools or the town with the collaborative regarding the construction or any of that information, so. We'll follow up the collaborative.
You're going to follow up. If I could, I'd recommend doing it before the 1st of July because we're getting a new director in there who may not know anything about this, the history of this. Thank you. That's about it.
Anything for you?
It was just sort of turning over to the new director at the meeting, the last meeting. They did discuss their fingerprinting policy, and there were some questions about what we were going to finalize with our policy and how we are going to enact it with which volunteers and at what level do we stop fingerprinting.
Yeah, I read the regs, and the regs are pretty clear that volunteers should have a quarry done, but don't need to have the fingerprinting done, that they see it as not being left alone with the child. That they might run into the hallway or something like that, but that's okay according to the regs. They understand that it would be impossible to have volunteers in the school.
Absolutely, yeah. My one concern is, like, with field trips, even on regular field trips, I know that when I have a field trip, I always try and have a dad so that I can have Dad take a group of boys to the bathroom.
Yeah.
Like, you know, even on, you know, an off-site field trip like that, I feel like we might want to extend the fingerprinting there because I have chaperones who are alone with kids and that sort, you know.
I think we're going to have to be more vigilant about not leaving chaperones alone with kids. I'm afraid if you do that, you will not have enough chaperones for field trips and the field trips will stop.
You think, I, I don't know.
I'll put it out, your parents, how many parents are going to go get fingerprinted?
I, I would.
You would?
I would, to be able to go on a trip.
The district we moved from, not in the state unfortunately, but they made us pay. Every single parent volunteer in that school has to pay to be fingerprinted, but it was a different state. I don't know.
I just feel like that's the spirit of the law.
We have a hard time getting volunteers at the very.
We do.
So I don't know.
Maybe, you know, it's something that we could perhaps work out with PTO where, like, the PTO, for volunteers, they could split. But I just feel like the reason that it's out there is to protect the kids. And if we're going to say, well, we're just going to cross our fingers and hope that. I don't know, I.
Joseph?
My concern, we're currently looking, planning our senior class play, and administration has directed us that we will have to have some type of adult chaperone at all rehearsals. My only concern is that that type of situation, it's already hard enough to find people to, you know, if it's not a teacher or an administrator to go out and find a parent. If we're then tell the parent they have to drive somewhere else and pay to be fingerprinted, it would just. I would be concerned that maybe we might not have the chaperones and they might cut down on the number of rehearsals or something like lock-in or semi, something like that. So class events might be hurt.
It's a fun, tough subject.
I think it will really hurt the volunteer program because parents are already, have so much going on that for them to find time to go get fingerprinted, you would just be asking them to do one more thing per day. And I don't think they would do it. They might forget, and then they would, you know. Is it something that we can bring in, like, for a day of bringing it in? Do you know what I mean? Like, have, this is.
No, you have to go to the site. It's very controlled by the state. But what we could do is we could have a conversation with the principals about the field trips. Which ones do you worry about? Because they're definitely a small group and they're wandering places, we wouldn't say. You know, you go to the Museum of Science, you're always around people. But if you're in a place like you're taking in the woods and you're disappearing with four kids, maybe we try and delineate. I don't know.
When did these regulations enter effect?
They're in effect.
Are they in effect now?
Yeah.
Do we have a policy to just adopt it?
Yeah. What if we put, we ask parents, we recommend that they get fingerprinted?
How long does the fingerprint last? I've, I've, no, we answered this.
Forever.
Okay.
Yeah.
This was not like the quarry.
They're working on a new software that would. They're working on a, um, new software that would rule it out, that if you had something added to your dead, your background, it would show up and be reported to the district you're working in. And every time someone goes to a new district, they have to have it done again, so. For, so even for parents, it will last the whole time you're here, and if this new software comes out, then we'll just be updated and it won't be a worry.
So a parent of a kindergartner could get fingerprinted then, and it would last all the way through?
It should last for the thirteen years.
Okay.
I totally understand that, like, this, the chances of something happening are, are like, just minute, but there's still that chance. I know, you just, I don't wanna be sitting here or watching a meeting after my terms up and say, like, you know, we could have, uh, I don't know, just...
Could've caught it.
Maybe we can, I mean, I don't know, maybe we can ask the PTOs to have funds.
So I, I, I would just, before we put anything, like...
I know where you're gonna be voting on that policy, so I...
Can we, can we wait to vote on it, or is it something that we're already behind for policy?
My suggestion would be that we put this policy in place, and then Policy Subcommittee, when we get to it, Policy Subcommittee amend it. And, and that discussion about the expansion to volunteers and parents, uh, be part of that amend, amendment. But right now, I think it's important that we get it in effect so that we can get our teachers and staff up and, up and with the system. And then...
They're underway.
They're underway, and then, but at least, you know, get that in place, and then worry about the, uh...
I, I think it would be helpful to bring this to the PTOs as well.
Yeah.
To talk about what their feeling is, would that inhibit them or not inhibit them? I'd like to hear from the parents directly, because I, I share your concern. I do worry about adults being alone.
Sure.
Um, I would hope that we're super vigilant around knowing the profile of predators and whatever, but I think if the PTOs agree, it wouldn't be a burden, uh, then, then we can move forward. But if we get to a point where we don't have volunteers, that's gonna be a major, major issue for the schools. So maybe we ask the PTOs what they think, and then bring that information back?
Yeah, I think that works, and I think that, I mean, unfortunately, at this point, we're kind of gonna have to wait to do that till September, um, because they, you know, they're closing down for the year, but, uh, I, I do agree that we should try to, I mean, and maybe, in that case, we hold some public forums and, and hear from parents who may not be involved in PTOs, and, and, and may just, uh, you know, be, want to volunteer in addition to the PTO. I mean, I think, I think there's an important community dialogue that could be had here. So...
I don't know, it's just always, you know, you never, you hear things on...
Yeah. No, I, I, Liz, I'm, I'm with you. So, um, alright, great. Middle School Working Group?
Um, we haven't, we'll begin meeting again this summer.
Sure. And then Policy Subcommittee?
Uh, we have a couple, um, we have a first reading for policy, Field Trip Policy I J O A, and the accompanying regulation I J O A dash R for the first reading. They're recently revised, and there's just some, uh, word changes. And it will be posted on the district's website for thirty days for public feedback.
Okay. And then there's policies for approval?
The School Committee posted two policies for the past thirty days, and now they're being wrapped back. Um, Policy I J N D D, which is our social media policy, is coming back for approval.
Sure. Would this be an amendment to the policy? Is that what we'd be voting on, the amendments, or the revisions to the policy? Because, uh, I, I mean, I assume we've...
It's the whole, you've amended the policy, but you're voting on the policy.
Okay. The motion?
So I move on the recommendation of the Policy Subcommittee, the School Committee approved Policy I J N, N D D, social media policy. So she, social media as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
May I, come to the second?
I think it was Katie. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? The motion carries. Moving on, Policy A D D A?
The second policy is the A D D A, the Background Check. Um, and it is, um, it's been posted for thirty days. So, um, I move on the recommendation of the Policy Subcommittee, the School Committee approved Policy A D D A, Background Checks as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And the motion carries. And then there's an additional motion that you'll make on that?
Yes, we need to make some additional motions, okay. I move that the School Committee not allow for hardship or waivers to be considered regarding the fee for the expanded fingerprint-based background checks.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Can I ask why?
Tom?
I don't think I was there for that discussion, huh?
I think you are.
Yeah, we discussed this at Policy, John, and, um, there was a lot of discussion around what criteria would we use to determine what constitutes a hardship. We also had a discussion that we haven't found a district in Massachusetts that has, um, so far approved, correct me if I'm wrong, Diane, that has approved hardship waivers, uh, of the fee. So, we were kind of following along with our colleagues throughout the state, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And the motion carries. Great. Moving right along to, uh, you have another motion.
Uh, I move that the School Committee grant the School Committee Chair, along with the Assistant of the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, authority to make a sustainability determination on the superintendent's Background Check.
Second.
Uh, I have a mo, suitability determination?
Yes.
Okay. Motion, uh, any second, seconds?
Katie, second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Alright, motion carries, cool.
One more.
And one more.
I move that the School Committee not accept sus- suitability determinations from other Massachusetts school districts. All new hires will be required to submit a new fingerprint-based Background Check as required by Policy A D D A.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And the motion carries. Wonderful. Uh, alright, great.
Textbook.
Textbook adoption. Uh, alright.
I move on the recommendation of the Superintendent that the School Committee approve the adoption of following textbooks for use in the Long Meadow Public Schools. Paul's Essential, Essentials of Human Anatomy and Physiology. Copyright twenty-fifteen, McGraw-Hill. And Algebra I A, Common Core Curriculum, copyright twenty-fifteen. Big Math Ideas, I guess, is the publisher.
Okay.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any further discussion on textbook adoption? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor? And the motion carries. Awesome.
Just for the record, I'd like to note that both textbooks now have electronic versions, so they'll be introduced in our math department and science department.
Good. Thank you. Alright, awesome. Moving right along...
Warrants.
To the approval of warrants.
I move the School Committee approve the warrant batch number twenty-two hundred of the General Operating Fund, fiscal year twenty-fourteen, dated June twenty-seventh, twenty-fourteen, in the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars and forty-six cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? And a motion carries.
Okay, I move the School Committee approve the warrant batch number twenty-two zero one of the School Lunch Fund, fiscal year twenty-fourteen, dated June twenty-seventh, twenty-fourteen, in the amount of eighty-three thousand six-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and twelve cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? And the motion carries.
And, uh, this is the last one. I move the School Committee approve the warrant batch number twenty-two oh two of the School Choice Fund, dated June twenty-seventh, twenty-fourteen, in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty dollars and thirty-eight cents.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? And the motion carries. Thank you very much, Michelle. It's a nice, well, I'm in a public school, Ken?
Yes.
Alright, there are, there's no consent agenda, there are no minutes, and there is an executive session planned. I'll entertain a motion to enter executive session?
We'll move.
And just so the public knows, this is a motion to enter executive session for the purposes of strategies that relates to contractual negoti- contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and we will be reconvening into open session. This motion does require a roll call. Vote. All those in favor? Oh, wait, I didn't have a second.
I have a second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 With that, I wish you all a very happy summer, and we will see you back on August twenty-fifth? Twenty-fifth. Uh, it's been great being Chair again for one night. Uh, have a good night.